All right, it is now 6:00 PM and I will call the regular meeting of the school board to order. Today is February 21st, 2024, and let's begin with attendance, Director Milner.
Director Pine, here. Director Zuzik.
Here.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Here.
Oh, Chair Tate.
Here.
Director Brunz.
Here.
Director Milner, here, and Director Biermeyer.
Here.
All right, thank you. And now I'd like to ask all those who are able to please stand and remove your headwear for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Zuzik motioned to approve with gratitude to Tammy Ludwig for making the last-minute changes, so well done on keeping up with us.
All right, can I get a second?
Second, Dressley.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, the motion to approve the agenda passes unanimously. Next, could I get a motion to approve the minutes from the January 24th, 2024 regular board meeting?
Biermeyer motions to...
Approve.
Approve.
All right, could I get a second, please?
Second, Dressley.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion to pass the, or approve the minutes from the January 24th, 2024 meeting is approved. Next, I'd like to thank all of the visitors that we have tonight. Thank you for joining us in person and online, and as well, we appreciate folks watching later on. We appreciate your involvement in the Hastings School District. All right, next, we have the Raider Spotlight, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Champa.
All right, I get the fun part. So first off, we have recognition of our school board. February marks Minnesota's School Board Appreciation Month, so at a time when public service cannot be described in any terms other than difficult, thank you for your service. Your individual and collective commitment to serve each and every student in our district is critical to the health and growth of our district. As Mayor Fassbender repeatedly states, "Strong schools equals strong communities." Again, thank you for your service, and we have certificates for each of you. Next, we have another certificate in recognition for Director Zuzik for his completion of Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4 through the Minnesota School Board Association, so congratulations. Next, we have bus appreciation. So we are so incredibly thankful for our partnership and for all that you do each and every day. We just can't thank you enough for what you do. There are many jobs in the district that I say, "I could do that." You have one that I always say, "I could not do that." So thank you so much for all that you do. We have a couple of posters here. We hope that you'll take that back, and so you can be reminded of our gratitude for the work that you do. And we have also a certificate for the Hastings Bus Company and a proclamation that you'll be reading, and then we'd like to hear anything from you as well.
All right, so this is from the state of Minnesota. It's a proclamation. Whereas through frigid winters and hot sunny days across dirt roads and multi-lane highways, from the early morning to late at night, Minnesota's school bus drivers safely transport over 682,000 students to and from school and activities. And whereas Minnesota's school bus drivers provide an incredible service to our students and communities, they are each responsible for the safety of dozens of children and support the success of our students and their families. And whereas Minnesota's school bus drivers play a crucial role in our school systems and are important figures in children's lives, often bookending a student's day at school, their safe and timely services positively influence students' educational experience. And whereas, thanks to the rigorous safety standards for bus drivers and their vehicles, students are nearly eight times safer riding to and from school in a school bus than in cars. And whereas the school bus system is the largest form of mass transit in Minnesota, school buses have reduced their environmental impact by using alternate fuels and retrofit diesel engines. And whereas, school districts throughout Minnesota are seeking dedicated professionals to serve in these fulfilling roles. And whereas, Minnesota appreciates school bus drivers and recognizes the invaluable contributions they make to public education and student safety. Today, we recognize these worthy professionals. It says, "Now therefore, I, Tim Walls, Governor of Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 21st, 2024 as School Bus Driver Appreciation Day." Thank you.
Come on up. And if you wouldn't mind, have a seat and use the mic so that the folks online can hear you. Thank you. We have Pat Reagan joining us here.
Hi, Pat Reagan, owner of Hastings Bus Company, Minnesota Coaches, and we thank you for the recognition and for the opportunity to serve you in the, in the district. The District 200 community, it's been a lifelong pleasure of mine, and it's nice to be recognized and for us to be able to recognize the people at the front lines at the bus company who really do the job and do deliver the, the safety that you cited, that is in the proclamation. It's really true. We're very proud of that. We work hard at it. And I'd just like to introduce some of our very special people. We have a lot of special people, but Terry Johnson, who's our terminal manager, has only been here 33 years, and he, he learned the bus business from the backseat of the bus, and then after a couple of years, he always found himself in the front seat of the bus, and and here, and we joke about it today, and, but it really does help him do his job, and he does it very, very well. And he, we talked earlier today, I think, fifth or sixth superintendency that Terry's been thankful, we're thankful to serve, and that's been a big, just been a big pleasure for us. And Terry's leadership does matter, and Terry's a good example of that. We also have Al Dunn, who's in our office and does a lot of the charter and special ed work and detail planning. Al Dunn, he's been here 29 years. We have a very special driver. She's been Driver of the Year, Marge Perle. Drives a special ed lift bus. Deb Dowell is here. She's a bus aide and a, and a van driver. She's worked for us for six years.
She's right here. She's right here.
Stacy? Stacy Partington's here. She's worked for us for six years. And then every company's got a hero, and this is a hero that we can all be proud of because she was a product of the Special Ed Department in the public schools, and she today works for us as a, as a bus aide. Heather Bolt is her name. She's been with us four years. She's a state champion, Special Olympian. So anyway, thank you for all your support and for the recognition, and we are thrilled to be able to be here, and we're thrilled to serve every day. We, these people and everybody else at the bus company, they, we know they're, they get to a point where it's not a job, it's a vocation. They love their kids, and it doesn't take too long, their blood starts to run yellow. And everybody here and at the bus company is happy to proclaim that and to continue to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for everything you guys do.
All right, one final acknowledgement that we want to give tonight and a future. So in March, we have our Wind Ensemble. We'll be coming to be our Raider Spotlight, or one of our Raider Spotlights, and they were just honored at the Minnesota Music Convention and just an outstanding performance. So to give you just a glimpse of the treat that we enjoyed for, oh, was it about an hour and a half? They were just amazing, and I found myself wanting to record, and, and I've played this for so many people and have just been in awe. And so next month, we will be recognizing our Wind Ensemble, and here's what they played. Just so proud of them. So we'll be recognizing them next month.
And I have to say, I was sitting next to Superintendent Champa at the concert, and it was like I was sitting next to the proudest mom on the planet with her phone recording and taking pictures and everything.
Nervous.
It was great. Well, thank you for doing the Raider/Reader Spotlight for us. All good stuff. Next, we have the Listening Session summary on the agenda, and we had a community member, one community member come to speak tonight, and she expressed her concerns about the school board's lack of action or inaction creating an unsafe environment for students and staff. I would like to make a public statement that the safety of students and staff is the top priority of our school board superintendent, administration, and staff. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. Everyone is, of course, entitled to their opinion, so, and that's why we, we listen to the public here. Next, we have the reports and discussions up, so we have Superintendent Champa, you're up again.
All right, well, we will move right into our cadence, so if you can pull up our cadence. Just a reminder, all of our leadership staff members report and reflect monthly on where they are on the goals and the aims of the district. So this is aligned to the vision and mission, and so you can see we've got our Engage Learners, Effective Operations, Communication, and Collaboration. And so we have representatives here to give you a glimpse of what that stands for, for the goals that they have. So welcome, high school team.
Thanks, great to see you all again. I feel like I'm dominating your time the last couple of weeks here, so thanks for putting up with us. Like Tammy said, it's, it's really nice to have kind of that, you've heard me say it a million times now, just that alignment, and to know that all the administrators in the district, all the district office staff have their goals aligned with the district mission and vision. It's just, it's nice to see it. It's, it's something feels very easy and natural to work toward in the year, and if you can see that graph, you see we're, we're making improvement. That's what it's really about, that continuous improvement. So my portion, we, we've got our three separate categories. Each one of us will take one, and mine is the Effective Operations within the building. And you've heard me talk a couple of times lately about how much time we're spending in management at the building level, whether it's behavior or the actual physical plant. This is where I get to have the fun with that instructional leadership and provide some professional development opportunities for our staff. Couple of goals we're working on at the high school this year is working with an equity consultant and asking our staff to really do some curious thinking about their grading practices. And they're doing that at their own pace, kind of peeling back what they're working on, and I'm providing opportunities for them to do that exploration. Halfway through the year so far, we've also added in another component with Tammy's assistance. Just again, those, those items are happening, plus working on our curriculum, kind of deep dive, as well as our vertical alignment. So the last PD session we had a couple of weeks ago, it was really nice to get our middle school and high school staff together for the first time in a very long time to talk to each other and figure out what we're teaching. That helps a building and a plant be effective when it comes to students. So that's what we're working on, and as you can see, there's some improvement. We're excited about it.
Thanks. Hi, Mindy Tavernier, Assistant Principal. I'm going to talk about the Engaged Learners section, which I have a little passion for, the coaching and working with observations with our staff. And so all, three of us have a very similar goal around this, where we're, our goal is to have more reflective conversations with our staff around the 5D dimensions, which Scott talked a little bit about the district alignment. So this is what's really nice, is that elementary all the way up, we're working on a five dimension. It's, it's just another way to look at practices, that teachers, best practices for the classroom. One focus we have is the student engagement focus, because we all know when students are engaged with the learning, they perform better. So we go into classrooms for walkthroughs, we go in for observations, we script, take notes, and then really try and push our staff with questions of curiosity on our end, and also pushing them toward the rubric, which it helps us ask specific questions through here to push them to the next level. And the other part is, once we kind of get our data figured out, is that we as a high school can meet to see what the needs are of our staff, and then also, because it's aligned, we can do that as a district as well. So it's really fun to, not only do we work with behavior a lot during the day, but to get out and see the kids doing what they do in the classroom. It's really nice to see.
And I'll be sharing a little bit about communication and collaboration. I'm Chris Moore, the other high school assistant principal. So one of the things we want to do is make sure we partner with parents and community members. So we do a lot of emails and communication home with parents, phone calls. It starts off actually right about now for our incoming ninth graders for next year, as we roll into the registration cycle. It's the first chance that we have an opportunity to reach out with, through our counselors, to talk about what high school is going to be like, how to select courses, how to set that four-year path down the right track for students to think about and, and make that first impression with parents. So that's underway right now. Then we start off the school year with a ninth grade orientation where parents come in, we tour the building, we talk about the spotlights that we have for the students to, to experience as they, they come through with us and have a chance to talk about our activities and, and sports as well with parents that way. So we do a lot of that. My personal goal is just to engage the ninth grade parents a little bit more. That's one of the historical biggest shifts for students as they, they continue with their schooling. So really want to make sure parents are involved and understand what's going on, so do, Mr. Doran sends out a newsletter every two to four weeks, maybe six weeks, depending on what's happening around the school. We do attendance reports where we'll check and make sure kids are where they're supposed to be, and if they're not, we get ahold of parents, invite them in for meetings and, and make sure they're doing what they need to do and on track, that they need to do that way. We do daily emails and phone calls. You know, unfortunately, it's, in our role, a lot of it is, it can be negative, but really, we're making sure parents are aware of what's going on and have those partnerships so that we can get them right back on the right track and, and make high school a successful experience for them. One of the pieces that we are also doing is our Raider Connect. That's a way that we send an email off to parents every, about every month, and, and say we've got this extended period of time for students to get caught up, to meet with the teachers and, and have a chance to dive deeper into the learning with the material they're working with. And in relation to that, we do a passback for grades, too. So that's where we can do a snapshot of where are all the students doing? So in our data system, we can pull grades and get a snapshot of where everybody is that way, and do we need to start bringing in? You can hear a little bit more about MTSS, another system of support we're, we're building here at the high school so that we can continue to partner with parents and teachers and get kids doing what they need to do to be successful. As far as our activity side, I know Trent Hanson sends out about three direct camp, Infinite Campus emails in relation to the seasons that are coming up, so parents know it's time for registration for the spring season, start thinking about that, talk to your child, and here's the process for, for doing that. He also sends it out via Twitter, so if the parents are, are going that way, they can have the access to that information as well. And then he does a quarterly newsletter just to give parents and community members a heads up on, on what's happening that way within our sports and activities. And then at the beginning of the year, like I mentioned, during that ninth grade orientation time, we do a Clubs and Activities Fair for students to get a feel for that. One of the pieces that we're working on with our, our innovation teams is how do we start reaching out more to community partnerships and establish some relationships that way, so students have a direct access to experiences and passions that they might have post-high school, and, and how can we get them partnering with community members on that? So that's our next step with our, our innovation team. Any questions?
I, I just want to tee the ball up. It's a goal of ours to talk about kids as often as we can, and so education is obviously both data-driven and human-centered, so I really, I would like to hear from each of you just one thing that you're really proud of, and it could be a, a single story about a single child, or it could be a piece of data about kids.
So I'm going to talk a couple of things. Last time I was here, we were giving out the grants.
Yeah.
So later this week or early next week, we're going to be giving 13 students Student of the Month Award. So that grant is already being put into place, and we're ready to hand those out and recognize those students who may typically be unseen in the classroom, but we're going to, we're starting having them feel a connection to school that way, hopefully. The other one was this year with our, our ninth grade students. We had fewer failures this year compared to last year. So fewer courses failed. So we, the MTSS work, the partnerships, the, the feeling of community that we're building in the high school is making a difference from what we're seeing right now.
I can give my one example that comes to me right away is a situation last year. A specific student that I worked really, really hard with and paired with the person who was in my job before to kind of get me in the loop. Working with these guys, and we had everyone on board, and the student was not on track to graduate. And that was new to me, to be in the role I am with going from fifth and seventh graders to now seniors, so a lot of trouble, a lot of behavior, a lot of not in school, aggressive things, but the student graduated, and we hugged at graduation, and not sure, I connect, I just connected about a month ago with the student, but really proud that we kind of turned it around and figured some things out. The other one we mentioned earlier was with the bus company. We've noticed, working with them and our systems and PBIS and middle and elementary, that our referrals are much lower on the bus side of things. So that's, we felt that a lot at the high school, just a big difference.
Mark, thanks for the question. I, actually, just before coming to the board meeting, we're, we're just starting to get the numbers in for registration for next year, and so I took a little peek at what the high school numbers are. There's a few of the ninth graders in their core classes, but when I looked at the newer electives that we're providing and some of those college credit-based classes where kids can actually learn a, a college credit in high school, our numbers are through the roof, absolutely through the roof, and those kids who normally wouldn't challenge themselves with an honors-level course are doing that. So next year, those courses' numbers are, right now, again, through the roof. I've got to figure out how to fit them all in, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I just want to commend your work. Just working in schools, I think one thing I always care myself is we can influence student behavior, but we can only control our behavior, and especially commend the gradebook work. Credits and grades are the currency that, that we have, and then so what do they, what do they value and what do they put in front of our students as these are the things that you should take with you when you leave our halls? That's hard work as an educator. Gradebooks are a very intimate practice, but there's a way to make it reflect what our students need to be successful. And I think I commend that work. That's blowing up a traditional system, and I, you should feel like honored to do that work. That's really cool.
Just a quick comment. I loved how, when Director Zuzik asked the question about what are you most proud of? Mr. Moore just grabbed the, like, yes, yes, you didn't have to think about that, which I appreciate. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right, next up? Next, we have a Teaching and Learning, so we just talked about MTSS, and they are here to talk about it a little bit more. So do you want to start with introductions?
Bree McNamara, the Elementary MTSS Coordinator.
I'm Andy Larson, the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator.
All right, so we just wanted to start out tonight by giving you guys an overview of the MTSS structure that we've been working to implement in Hastings. So the MTSS structure that we're implementing is really this infrastructure of continuous improvement. One of our biggest goals is always evaluating the systems and structures we have in place to really make sure we can strengthen them and that they are the best that we need them to be to meet the needs of our staff and students. We operate off of these six core pieces, so really looking at that universal screener data and our assessments. We work really hard to make data-based decisions. The MTSS process looks at our intervention process and progress monitoring tools, research-based curriculum practices, and we also really work to have multi-layered supports and systems, so really making sure we're hitting the needs of all of our students as well as engaging our family and community partnerships to make sure we're maximizing our impact. Students are truly at the center of all of this, and our goal is to ensure that all of our students leave having the best social, emotional, behavioral, and academic outcome that's possible. So that's just an overview of our goals within our MTSS framework.
Sorry. I think one of the hardest things for, for people to understand is outside of a educational system, coming in and hearing a lot of acronyms and, and verbiage that we're not really super familiar with, like MTSS, and even when we break it down and call it multi-tiered systems of support, what does that really mean? And, and that's what we want to be able to do tonight for you, is we want to be able to kind of paint a picture of what this support system looks like throughout our entire system.
So although there are a lot of different components to multi-tiered systems of support, as a starting point, sometimes it's helpful to, to start with this three-tiered prevention framework. And this framework is really involving all students. So as you can see, tier one of this framework has universal supports, which is high-quality instruction for all students. And then as we go up the tiers of support, both with academic and social and emotional learning, there are increased intensity and frequency of those, of interventions for students who have higher levels of needs for academics and social-emotional learning. And that would be our tier two, our targeted supplemental instruction for some students, and, and this is all layered. So that's always going to be in addition to the tier one universal supports. And then at the very top of this pyramid is tier three, so this is really highly intensive and individualized instruction for a few students. So this is really highly intensive and individualized instruction for a few students and includes both the academic and social-emotional side and is really the most intensive and highest level of need for students within this framework. So just to emphasize, all students are students in MTSS with these layers of support. And although we like to focus sometimes on this framework of tiers of intensive intervention or tiers of intervention, we'll also be talking about some of those other goals as we move forward. This is kind of a starting point for many of our processes we're beginning to, well, as we were beginning to implement MTSS and continue to do so.
So we are going to jump in and give you some context about the work we've been doing at the elementary level. So last year, our entry point or one of our starting pieces was to take a look at our universal screener and assessments. We started by thinking through FastBridge, which is our universal screener tool, and really worked to align the assessments we were giving to students so that they were appropriate for the grade level and the information that teachers really, truly need to provide the targeted instruction for our students. So we spent some time aligning those assessments and then provided some really strategic professional development for our teachers around FastBridge. So we introduced them to the different reports that FastBridge provides. We worked to implement some data analysis protocols. We worked to look at the progress monitoring tools that are available to us and then some intervention resources that FastBridge provides. That leads us into this idea of an assessment cycle. And so truly, we like to think of it as a cyclical process. Students will start off by taking a universal screener, and that typically happens three times a year. After we administer that universal screener, we're able to identify what students need, what level of support. We'll typically do some further digging into our students who need additional layers of support by administering what's called a diagnostic assessment. We'll touch on that a little more intentionally in a bit. From that data, we can identify exactly what our students need. So what is that targeted skill? We match that skill to an intervention and then we align it to a progress monitoring tool, and that's the key. We want to make sure that we have strategic goals set for our students and that we can monitor their growth to ensure they're going to meet those targets. And that will then bring us back to another screening process where we'll continue this cycle to make sure we're just continuously supporting our students.
So I would like to just talk really briefly about that universal screener. We started this process, we've been using FastBridge for several years, but as we implemented the MTSS process at the beginning of last year, we really started to dive more into the FastBridge data. And I want to point that out because as many of you know, the READ Act is the big thing that's happening right now in our schools. And I'm sure at some point I will get back in front of you and talk more about it as I've been a part of that process. But FastBridge is one of the very, is one of only two screeners that is approved through the, through the state as a district-level screener. So I've talked about this a lot with the previous board and you'll hear me say it a lot here. Many of the things that have come out through the READ Act, we have already been doing and we have been ahead of the curve on. And I think it's really important that we, that we recognize that the work that we've done is in alignment with what this says is best practice.
All right, so if you want to keep that mic, Andy's gonna talk a bit about some multi-layered practices and support.
So when we think about all of the different support systems that we have in place in our schools, a lot of times we think of the academic side. So we have the Title I program, which is our reading interventionists. We have our ADSIS program, which is another form of intervention that we use specifically for literacy as well, to be able to provide as many students with additional supports as we can. Through the MTSS process, we've also been able to bring in additional coaches. Those coaches work with both classroom teachers and specific students to be able to provide instructional support both in behavior and academics. Those coaches have been in place over the last two years and we've seen some amazing growth with the kids that they've worked with, both academically and socially. But when we think about the multi-layered supports, it's not just staff that we can bring in. So we have had a program this year called Catalyst, which is an outside organization that provides training to teachers on engagement strategies for students. So Mr. Moore talked earlier about the importance of engagement with students and engaged students are likelier to have less behavioral issues and are more likely to be able to learn better. So the engagement strategies that this program has brought in have really allowed us to be able to work with our students and our teachers to be able to continue to bolster their, their array of skills, basically. We've also had literacy coaching. We have an outside consultant come in and provide coaching to our staff six times a year at each of our buildings. So that allows us to kind of keep on the edge of best practices in the science of reading and be able to continue to refine the work that we've been doing over the last few years.
We've also done a lot of work around our intervention process and progress monitoring. So we started two years ago by really trying to streamline what our problem-solving process looked like across the district. All three elementaries, we had stakeholders come together and we created a process that would be uniform in all three buildings. So if a teacher at any elementary school noticed that they were having an academic, a difficulty with a student either academically or behaviorally, they would just hop on the MTSS website, they would fill out a referral. That referral would go directly to myself and our coaches and then we would be able to connect with that teacher immediately. We would provide some immediate supports, accommodations, modifications, observations, and then also put that teacher on the calendar for a larger problem-solving team meeting with other teachers and stakeholders from each building. In that process, we're able to really talk with the teacher about the whole child. We take a look at their strengths, their areas of growth, and then zone in on one specific targeted skill. Whatever that skill is, we support the teacher in choosing an intervention that's going to really meet the needs of that child. We help them identify what progress monitoring tool we'll use to track their growth. We set ambitious goals, so accelerated targets, so that not only are we going to achieve, but we're going to achieve at a pace that will catch us up. And then out of that meeting, our coaches have been taking all this information and creating a personalized learning plan for the student. All the information we talked about is included in that plan as well as links to the progress monitoring data, a communication plan so that we can make sure that families are a partner in this work and that we're consistently communicating with them about student progress. It's kind of a one-stop shop. And we come back to that data and that information frequently so that we really can ensure that students are on track to making their gains. So we kind of talked about a lot and we wanted to make sure that you guys could see what this feels like if you were a staff member at our school. So all of our students are administered that universal screener to kind of sum this up. And then once that's administered, teachers engage in a data analysis protocol. And then they administer those additional assessments where necessary. Based on that, we're able to identify the levels of support that our students need. Some students are just going to need that universal quality instruction. Some students might need a little bit more. And then other students may have intensive needs that we need to think more carefully about. And so we'll just touch a little bit on each of these.
So when we think of that tier one, that's the instruction that all of our students are getting, it's really important that we have that high-quality core instruction. The, the things that we're doing right now in both literacy and math are very much in line with what we know are best practices. We are working on getting a new literacy curriculum for the coming year. That's one of our big goals with having that research-based curriculum that has best practice. And it's really important that we think about this as a means of all students getting this instruction. So even students who are receiving additional support, they aren't receiving their additional support during what we call our tier one instruction. So if a teacher is doing a whole group lesson on literacy, we aren't having our students pulled out of that, out of that class to receive a different intervention at that same time. Then we get to that tier two instruction and that is kind of that spot where either the teacher is providing a little bit of additional support or we have another staff member being able to provide that support. So tier two support can look a little bit different. It might just be added time to small-group instruction. So if our teachers are meeting with all of our students three times a week, they may be meeting with our tier two students four or five times a week to be able to provide additional support in the skills that they need to be able to practice. It might also be modified instruction. So instead of focusing on both phonics and comprehension in a small-group reading, maybe they focus more on the phonics because the student needs more of that time. We also might be able to provide more intense instruction. So rather than a group of four students, we might have a group of two students who are being able to receive more intense instruction during that small-group time.
All right, and then just to wrap this part up, we are going to look at what some of those tier three services look like. Our students who are furthest from proficiency, showing the highest need for support, are being provided reading intervention services from our title and ADSIS specialists. So they are getting a double dip of instruction through communication with the classroom teacher and those interventionists. So if I am working on a specific skill in phonics in my classroom, that student is then getting a second dose of that with the interventionist so that we can ensure that they are getting a more intensified experience. We also talked a bit about that problem-solving team referral, and so an MTSS coach is frequently going to be checking in with students. We are doing some emotional regulation support, some one-on-one conferences, check-in, checks-out, it's check-in, check-out models with students. So this, depending on the need, the support is going to look the way it should. And then we're progress monitoring, looking at those six-to-eight-week cycles, and then that data review. So frequently reviewing that data to inform our next steps. Are there any questions about any of these pieces so far? I know that, I feel like that was a lot of information.
Chair taped my head. So one, I want to commend your responsiveness to staff when they submit that help request. Just looking at our survey results from the past, we know that's something staff wants, just that accountability and responsiveness and support from admin. So that is huge and just as an educator, I appreciate that. As someone who's like way too nerded out on this stuff, I just want to almost push you to do like a clarifying thing for us. So the tiers have like an effect rate, like the percent of students that will find success with certain levels of support. Can you speak to that? And then when you find that it's out of whack, how do you evaluate and change the system? Are you okay?
So I can, I can speak a little bit to that and I'll, I'll use literacy instruction as just kind of the, the main way to kind of look at that. When we think about students in an elementary school, 75% of students should be able to receive, should be able to read at grade level with quality tier one instruction. So if we go through and we give all of our students the same instruction, 75% of them should become proficient in reading, no problem. Then we have 20% or so that are going to need a small additional support. So when we think about those students who aren't quite getting it, now we're going to help them get there by giving them that additional, you know, percentage of, of time. And then we have 5% of our students who can get to the ability to read at grade level if we can provide them that intense intervention. I'm not sure, Director Burns, if that's what you were more talking about, but...
Yeah, that, that's, that's perfect. And then I, the follow-up or the adjacent question, if you find that your percentages are off, so you've got 65% are, are meeting expectations with your tier one core instruction, how do you address that as, as a team? Because that's important.
Sure. So I, I think that's one of the big things that, that we want to look at, especially as we switch, you know, literacy curriculums, that's, that's going to be one of the core things that we look at is, are the 75% of our students being able to get to that amount? Because if they are, or if they aren't, that means somewhere there's an instructional issue, right? So, you know, I've, I've talked to the board before about the idea of having more instructional coaches. Right now, we don't have a lot of staff that can go in and provide feedback to teachers on their instructional methods. Our coaches that we have provide support to students and provide support to teachers through the students, but not actually providing, you know, feedback and coaching support on their teaching. So that would be a really crucial piece to us being able to ensure that going forward. Right now, our team is able to go in and do walkthroughs and provide feedback to staff on the things we're seeing, but we just don't have enough people to be able to do that fully at this point.
I would just also highlight that that's where we could also leverage the PLCs. And going in, our PLCs have some pretty incredible data protocols in place. They're looking at the data, they're seeing what the student results are saying. And so really, the teams are working to think about, okay, if this didn't work for our kids, what do we need to change or shift? And then us being part of those conversations, I think, really helps push it, push it to another level too.
So since I have my hand in teaching and learning just a little bit right now, I would add to that, and this is based on the conversations that we've had as well, to your question, is fidelity, right? So if we see that we have an issue, we talk a lot about guaranteed and viable curriculum and then making sure we're doing so with fidelity.
One of the biggest challenges with multi-tiered systems of support is communication among and between groups of adults. And so there's a handoff at the end of the year and the kiddo goes to the next grade level. The kiddo goes from tier one to tier two intervention during the day. The student at the middle level goes to six different teachers at the seven, at the high school level, go to seven different teachers in a day. Talk about what or how we do that, communication among and between adults, so that everybody really understands what we're working on.
I think that's the beauty of us being able to collaborate together and Maddie can speak to a little bit about how that middle school transition works?
Yeah, I'll say, so one specific example of that handoff is the fourth to fifth-grade transition, which is a huge jump for kids and exactly what you said, Director Zuzik, of the going from one teacher to many. And even though the fifth-grade pods are really, really good at relationships and they have that sort of house feel, there's still a huge shift in the culture of that student's experience. This was a year where we had some really solid intervention plans that were teed up by the fourth-grade teams and teachers and they're, they were very detailed. And so in some cases, we were able to take the exact intervention that the fourth-grade team did and I was able to reach out to the fourth-grade MTSS coaches and say, what exact rubric, check form did you use? And we tried it. And sometimes the challenges in a different environment, that same intervention doesn't work. So then we were able to, well, we, we tried this, it didn't work, what can we do differently? And a lot of times, we're finding that students do have different needs as they transition to the next building and then we engage in our problem-solving process at the middle school and high school.
We did also at the end of last year, collaborate with the fifth-grade staff. So we went to them and asked what information would be most important for you to receive for your incoming students. And so then we worked with them and the counselors to make sure that we could, from the elementary level, get that information to them.
And, and I guess finally, at, at the elementary level, moving from one grade to another within the same building, one of the things, it's, it's often easiest for teachers just to walk down the hall and talk to, you know, who they had last year. But one of the things that we did was, at the end of the year, our teachers filled out kind of a cross-grade level form for each of our students where they listed what are the skills that we're currently working on, what are the skills that they've already mastered, to be able to hand that off to teachers so that we didn't have to spend, you know, a large chunk of time doing assessments at the beginning of the year. One of the things through the continual improvement process of this is, is that we learned that there are a chunk of kids who change from spring to fall and those skill sets are different. And so we do want to think about, you know, what are the things we need to do in the fall to be able to make sure that we're set to go? But having that information from last year's teacher can be an invaluable resource for those teachers to start the year.
That's all right. We won't spend too much time here, but we wanted to give you a glance at the student experience. So this is just a mock set of what data looks like as you take a universal screener and you can see that kids kind of fall all over the map and that's, it's our job to think about what they need. So if we look at Joey down here, I can see as his teacher that Joey is a student who has high risk of not meeting grade level proficiency. And so then as his teacher, my job would be to dig a little deeper, administer a diagnostic assessment. That might tell me that Joey is really stuck in this phonetic skill. Then I'm going to provide that intervention, I'm going to monitor his progress at those goals, I'm going to continuously monitor and come back and adjust so that I could hopefully get him closer to that grade level proficiency. so that I could hopefully get him closer to that grade level proficiency by the time he leaves my classroom. Okay, two more pieces for elementary, and then we'll shift to Maddie.
I promise we'll give Maddie enough time to be able to talk to. So we've talked about that research-based curriculum a couple of times. The, the, right now, we've been using the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Curriculum for the past two to three years, depending on grade level. Kindergarten kind of piloted it one year, and now we're using it in pre-K through one, which phonemic awareness is a skill that needs to be focused on in all three of those grades. Some of you may know through your work with the Read Act that the Hegarty Phonics Program wasn't one of the approved programs that was listed. They have two different programs. So their Phonics Program is a brand-new program that was just beginning to be sold this summer. In fact, we had looked at it last fall and couldn't even have a chance to, or last spring, and couldn't even have a chance to see it until the summer because it wasn't ready yet. Clearly, they have some more work to do in that regard because they didn't meet that approval rating. However, their phonemic awareness program is highly regarded and is one of the best out there. So I, I feel very good about having that program now. And this year, bringing it into our pre-K program has been great as well. The UFLI pilot that we've done this year is a phonics-based program that we use in whole group for our K1 and 2 students. And then we use it also in small group intervention for K4. So it's able to provide some of that targeted skill that Bree's been talking about, where when a teacher does a diagnostic, we can identify exactly where students are at and be able to meet that need. And then, as I've said, we're currently looking at selecting a new core curriculum through the Read Act expectations.
Family and community partnerships is the last of the six pieces, and I'd argue one of the most important. We've made some significant growth in this area by having our radar set goal days to kick off our school year this, this past year. Those days were really powerful and really centered around building relationships with our family. We wanted to get to know families and students so that we could really leverage that throughout the year. Another really exciting endeavor that we embarked on this year is Countdown to Kindergarten. We had a literacy session for our incoming kindergarten families where Andy and I were able to give them just a preview of what exactly does literacy look like in school. We focused in on phonemic awareness, that very basic starting level of literacy, talked them through what it is, gave them a couple of fun activities that they could engage with their kids at home, and then hopefully can continue those kinds of experiences moving forward. All yours.
All right, so that was a look at the elementary side, although, did you have a question? Sorry, okay. And then, and then a lot of that work and that, that is a foundation for what is done at the middle school and high school. There are, of course, as we already talked about, some differences just because of the nature of the programming that happens at the middle school and high school. So a look at what is maybe a little bit different. For our universal screeners and assessments, at the middle school particularly, we use NWA testing as our universal screener for reading and math. And then at both buildings, we have, this year, started to implement an early warning system where we have developed aligned thresholds for academics and behavior, attendance, behavior, and course performance. We call those the ABCs. And we have used that as a real consistent way of identifying students who need more support, sort of across the board. And then our database decision-making at the middle school and high school has involved a variety of diagnostic measures and progress monitoring tools. So at the middle school, in math lab, for example, they've used Math iExcel this year as a, an incredibly informative tool to really zone in on what students' strengths are, what students' areas of growth are, and to be able to see progress really visibly through that program. Our reading lab at the middle school has historically used the BASSE assessment, and we're looking at running records as a little bit more of an efficient way of progress monitoring. And then at, actually at a variety of levels, we've implemented a little bit of curriculum-based measurement tools, which especially at the high school where we lack diagnostic measures and actually a lot of universal screening data, curriculum-based measurement tools have been kind of a, a variety of tools. Specifically, we've used it for identifying needs in math that have been ways of assessing students with nationally-normed data. And then we've also used a variety of rating skills for more of the social-emotional side of things. As far as research-based curriculum goes at the middle school and high school, Mr. Doran actually spoke to this, but a lot of this has been alignment of existing programming. And, and he spoke to the vertical alignment that happened a week ago with our teams at both buildings, getting to talk about what programming exists and, and how we can continue to improve curricula at all levels. And then even things like our Avid program coming to the middle school. So we have a lot of growth and alignment with, with programs like that that really provide a variety of supports for students. And then as far as intervention process and progress monitoring goes, we have really, in the last year and a half, worked to develop a process that's similar to elementary, but meets the needs of our middle school and high school students for our problem solving. And, and it specifically meets sort of the challenge of not having that one classroom teacher, but a lot of teachers watching over students. And to make sure that we're using data, that students don't fall through their cracks, and that we're also being collaborative and gathering feedback from staff and making those decisions collaboratively. And then for our interventions at the middle school and high school, we've been working to build capacity in this area. We have existing academic interventions such as math lab and reading lab at the middle school, social and emotional interventions. We've worked with our counselors quite a bit at both buildings to continue those and build capacity with our social-emotional work there. And then also executive skill interventions. I've been able to partner with some of our special education resource teachers, our school psychologists. Lots of people in our buildings have great wealth and knowledge in these areas and can really provide a lot of great ideas for interventions. And we're working to build capacity for people to implement them. Then family and community partnerships. We have really wanted to engage families in this process. So we've found for the problem-solving meetings, for example, that they're really most effective when we have parents and guardians at the table. And we've really fought to, to have them there so that we can make this a really collaborative process. And we've found that that's just the most successful, as well as students. Sometimes I think it's easy to overlook the student's voice in this process, and so we've really tried to be intentional about that. And then as far as communication or collaboration with community stakeholders, we've really partnered at the middle school and high school with folks like Canvas Health and our chemical health specialists. We also work with communities and schools and partner with our social workers because a lot of the needs that our students have are really big and can, can just be so much bigger than our school in and of itself. So that collaboration has been hugely important and really essential as far as the problem, problem-solving process and supports go for students. Just like with the elementary, I wanted to show you a sort of like visual of what this really looks like. And so there are sort of two ways we identify student needs at the middle school and high school currently. We use our universal screeners, which include the NWA testing and then also that early warning system for looking at attendance, behavior, and grades. We also have a student concern form that we're able to respond to student and family concerns very quickly. But we also want to make sure we're not reliant on those concerns being brought forth for us to be able to recognize student needs. So we use a combination of the screeners and student concern forms to identify needs. And then we collect a lot of input, and that's one of the most challenging pieces of having so many different people working with a student. So we make sure we, we gather a lot of input, knowing everyone can't be at the problem-solving table to support the student when we get to that time. And we also involve students and their families in this process. Then we have, if necessary, sometimes it's as simple as, sort of like they said for elementary, problem-solving some more accommodations or some lower-level supports for students in their classrooms. But if needed, we would do a tier-three problem-solving meeting to determine the intervention needed, progress monitoring tools. And that's been huge because if we don't have the progress monitoring tools established or a clear goal for them, then it's really hard to tell if an intervention is successful or not. And then next steps. And then we really want to make sure everyone's involved in the communication piece. So we, we've worked closely with our counselors and the interventionists to meet with the student and caregivers to present, prevent, present this plan and set specific goals with the students so their voice is involved. And then the intervention is implemented with fidelity, progress monitoring is collected, the data. And then after six to eight weeks, we evaluate growth and determine next steps.
All right, so incredibly exciting, truly. We, I'm sure as you all already know, received the Minnesota MTSS grant. And through that grant writing process, we were able to, through that infrastructure of continuous improvement, analyze our systems and structures and really pinpoint what some areas of growth were for us. Out of those areas of growth, we came up with a couple of goals that we're going to work towards over the next however many years. So goal number one is family engagement. This is something we really want to leverage and build upon moving forward. We're going to look at getting together a family communication guide so we have a streamlined process throughout the district, and then really work on those family partnership events. I mentioned that Countdown to Kindergarten, it was so powerful, and so many families came, left smiling, and we just want to continue to build upon that. Another goal is our teaming structures, looking at our teams across the district, making sure everyone has clear roles, communication, that we have a district-wide leadership team that's part of that review cycle, and that there are protocols in place to support us. Goal number three, also, these are all really exciting, I get super passionate about this, is just data-driven professional learning plans. So really tying those action cards that we have to clear goals for professional learning and supporting that through some job-embedded coaching and support.
Our fourth goal is all about continuous improvement. And we've been working to develop our district leadership team that's creating these goals, action planning, and moving forward with that, the next steps. Excuse me. Goal five is database decision-making with multi-layered practices and supports, looking at those protocols and building on the supports in place.
You got it. And then just at the secondary level, we noticed that one of our areas of need is just really making sure that we had that aligned academic and SEL curriculum in place. And so you heard Scott and Maddie both mention that phase-one curriculum review and the vertical alignment, really just looking at what do we have, how is it working, what do we need? And really trying to go through this cycle so that we can make sure that we've got the resources and supports to best provide an experience for our students. And that brings us full circle back to this infrastructure of continuous improvement. This work is never going to be done. Truly, we are always going to be looking at our systems and structures. We want to make sure that we have the very best. What is the latest research? What are best practices? What are we doing that's working and not working? Let's be real about it, and let's be willing to, to think strategically and creatively so that we can make sure we have the best practices in place, because that's what Hastings deserves. So that's the end of our sort of presentation. If you have any questions or ever want to know more about any of this, we are all always open to questions and talking about it.
Any questions? Yes.
I want to issue a compliment first and then an apology. So compliment, in your work, I see student voice, community voice, teacher voice, and the professional development, and I think that's huge. I feel earlier, I've been processing my question because I'm, I'm a Libra, is that the problem? But it, it felt like a micromanagement question. And I just wanted to highlight how much you sharpen your saw to do the work that you're doing, and that's huge. That, it's not a static practice, it's very dynamic, and it shows in what you guys are doing, so thank you.
You know, just reflecting back on the survey, you know, the teachers are doing a fantastic job. The kids are happy, the parents were happy, but the staff was feeling that there was needing more support. Do you think with this evolving cycle and all the aggressive work that you're doing, putting these practices in place, that you're seeing, you know, benefits in the staff, too? Or is there just not enough support?
I can't speak to all pieces, but I will say that the staff have felt tremendously supported by our MTSS coaches and, and us in general. Truly, anytime there is a need or a support, we're there, and that really does help. Or if teachers are implementing things, I mean, we've had coaches go in and do class-wide lessons over a course of a month or two to really remediate a skill that a whole class needed, or just individual support, or just even just listening to a teacher and providing some resources. All of those things, I think, have helped shift that a bit. I don't think it's enough.
And absolutely, I would say it's definitely not, you know, something that we can fix right away. But when, when we entered into this year, we knew that this would be the year that a lot of our ESTR funds would expire, right? So that we wouldn't be able to have as many of the coaching supports moving forward. And so one of the things that we've really tried to do is to create a, a system where our coaches can be able to help the teachers understand the ways that they can do the interventions, too, in their classrooms without having to have an additional person. Now, that's not always a possibility, there does need to be, you know, other support systems in place. But the recognition of that early on has got us to a point where we won't get to June and all of a sudden, things are pulled away and, and everyone's sitting here not knowing what to do. So I do feel like we've, we've kind of been forward-thinking on that.
Two quick examples at the middle school and high school of how I felt that staff are feeling a little more supported is, one, they've thanked me for times we've been able to look at data, and they really appreciate that time being carved out for them. There's never enough time, but I have gotten just the thankfulness for that. And then also the sort of, like, when, when staff understand that we're being able to screen for student concerns, I think at the secondary level, that, that just like helps them like relax a little bit because they know that someone else is watching out for our kids.
The kindergarten back-to-school, the, of all feedback I hear, it was just an amazing event, especially with the parents who have first timers going. That was an excellent, fantastic thing that you did this year.
I will just speak to personally, my husband took my daughter and was able to come to one of my sessions, and he walked away and was like, I really understand what this is. And he bought it home and was working on those things with my kiddo, which is cool to step back as an educator and let your spouse kind of have that experience with your kid, too.
I, I will say, too, you know, when we think about the continuous improvement that we keep talking about over and over, that idea came from meeting with our curriculum advisory team. So when we met with them and the parents were able to kind of provide us their thoughts and different things, one of the things that we talked about was the importance of the phonemic awareness work that we do with our pre-K and, and K students. And not all of our students who go to kindergarten also go to Tilden, you know, or, or any kind of pre-K program. And so we wanted to create an on-ramp for those families who have said, like, we don't know anything about this, you know, this system of, of teaching. A, a, a chance for them to be able to kind of just get a quick blurb of, of what it could be. So I appreciate that feedback, too. I know that's something that we heard from a lot of families, is that they really appreciated it.
All right, any other questions? No? All right, well, thank you so much for joining us and for all the great information tonight.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the Native American Parent Advisory Committee and Resolution. Welcome.
Welcome, do you just want to start with some introductions?
Anin, netami gavo indijna kaz, gamas gavo wako kaga dunjba, makwan durem, gosakas kajame kaga nokita. Hi, my name is Keenan Humphrey, my Ojibwe name is first one standing. I am from the Leech Lake Band of Ojibwe. I also work in our I also work in our education division at Leech Lake. I am from the Bear Clan. I am a Hastings resident and a preschool parent. I am the chairperson for the Native American Parent Advisory Committee here for Hastings. The work that we do on NAIPAC is my literal day job, so I kind of have a little bit of a background here.
Hello, I'm Samantha Hartley. I am a Hastings graduate, and I also have a senior who will be graduating this year. His name is Darren, and he is a Prairie Island enrolled tribal member. And I am the vice chair.
Hi, I'm Kim Rico. I am a community member. I think I was the last graduating high school class of this building here in Hastings. I have two kids in the district, one in elementary and one in high school, and I am the secretary of the committee.
So if we could go to the next slide. Thank you. So a little background on this process. Minnesota state statutes require districts with 10 or more Native American students to have a Native American Parent Advisory Committee or American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. We use those terms interchangeably. Specifically, the statute cites that school boards and American Indian schools must provide for the maximum involvement of parents and children enrolled in education programs, programs for elementary and secondary grades, special education programs, and support services. To be compliant with the statutory requirements, each year on March 1st, annual compliance documents are submitted to the Office of American Indian Education at MDE. It provides an opportunity for the parent committee to meet and discuss the educational offerings at their school district. Now, this process is supposed to be a formal presentation of the compliance vote with parent committee discussion and presented and recorded publicly to the school board. This process has not been conducted properly in the past. Votes of concurrence have been submitted for the last four years with the previous structure of the committee not involving the entirety of the parents on the committee. Documents were sent over and signed off on the same exact day with no discussion with the parent group, and yet those previous members of the committee have been saying that needs of our students were never being met here in Hastings. So why would we be submitting a vote of concurrence? Now, we met as a group in January and decided to vote non-concurrent, and I'll go into that a little bit more as well. Despite this vote of non-concurrents, we have made more strides in the last five months with our committee restructure and Dr. Champa's tireless work than had been done in previous years combined. For the first time, we have formal bylaws, we have more community involvement, we have public events, we were even a voluntary tribal consult with the Tribal Nations Education Committee, and those are only required if you have 50% more of your student population as American Indian, or if you receive more than $40,000 in Title VI federal American Indian dollars. So for us to be allowed to sit in on those meetings and for our recommendation to be heard by Dr. Champa and to get us on that agenda was really nice to hear and be a part of. We have friends and allies throughout the state on the Tribal Nations Education Committee and the Office of American Indian Education at MDE who know exactly what we are working towards, which is to be one of the prime examples of a well-run and model Indian education program and to make significant strides to close achievement gaps for our American Indian students. I've had multiple conversations with members of TENEC and the Office of American Indian Education, and they have all said that the work we have done has not gone unnoticed by them. They see the turnaround that we have made and want to do everything they can to help us help Native American students here in Hastings. This is not a reflection of your work. This is not a reflection of Dr. Champa's work or any of the staff and teachers in our schools. It's just the reality of what we're working with right now. Until our Native American students are succeeding at or above the same level, if they're not native peers or making significant progress towards that, we cannot confidently submit a vote of concurrence at this time. And I'll pass it off to Sam and Kim, who will read off our recommendations. So if we could go to the next slide, there's a little bit more background on this process too.
Thank you. Thank you. So part of the process of submitting the vote of non-concurrents is that we, you know, we need to support that with recommendations on how to work with the district to make the improvements that are going to result in students being, you know, higher achieving. So we have a list of six, and, you know, guidelines are also pretty clear about, you know, make them actionable, you know, almost like SMART goals. Make them something that can be done and concise. So the first one that we came up with is already in progress, and we give a lot of credit to everyone who's helped work with this immediately, and add dedicated staffing. So we have the Native American Education Liaison, and part of their salary is going to be supported by the budget that results from the NAIPAC funding, right? Yeah. We'll split them in half, okay?
Yeah.
The second one is curriculum and language implementation as required by Indigenous Education for All. And the third one is 100% staff development attendance through tribal relations training through the Office of American Indian Education. And those are all things that we think are pretty actionable and are going to work to help support.
The fourth one is district-wide endorsement and promotion of new standards and ongoing efforts. The fifth one is the Hastings NAIPAC would like all student educational assessment data disaggregated by ethnicity and made available to us on a yearly basis. And the sixth one is the Hastings NAIPAC would like the full transparency allowable on any requests for information related to expenditures and items associated with the NAIPAC funding.
And these are going to be part of the formal document that's submitted and given a copy to all of you.
So the other document that is on our agenda is the resolution form that is going to be sent to MDE. So if we can pull that up and just... I have a sheet filled out with our dates and my signature on it already, and I can leave that with members of the school board to look over and sign off as well because we will be having to send those off at the end of the month to MDE. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer, or try to. I appreciate the data aggregating or disaggregating that. Right now, do you feel, without having that, and I think that's a good thing to have, so I'm not pushing back against that, do you have a sense of the baseline of indigenous students in our community now?
I actually did a little digging on that. I don't know, I really don't know much about this, and I just started playing around and clicking buttons last night. And I found the North Star data, it's something compiled, and they had this really cool, like, it was almost like, and you could, it was charts showing like student performance like all over the district and like overall achievement was something like 70-plus percent, right? But then you could click a little thing and go by demographic. And so like the Native American population, it showed, I think, somewhere more like 50 to 40%. And it was like noticeable, you know? So that was a good visual. I should have brought that, but, you know, that is an example of just us kind of not being experts at this. So we really do want to lean on your data people to help us quickly be able to find that information in a summary format.
I think another key part is getting students identified correctly. That's been a huge struggle, and I know we're not the only district struggling. It's across the nation. But if we don't have them identified correctly, then they're also not pulling into those totals and percentages, and we don't know. We don't know if we don't know. And so we also can't help support those families. We can't help support the students or parents. So that's another huge part of that.
Part of our tribal consultation in the fall was filling out, with the help of Dr. Champa, was a school profile that all tribal nations were able to look at and see our numbers. And I was trying to, I thought I had it with me. But we did have kind of baseline knowledge in the fall, so it'll be interesting to see what kind of trends have started to show in the spring because we have our next consultation next week.
Dr. Champa, I think you sent that to us just from 30,000 feet. It was, wasn't it like 35, not percent, but 35 points? When you compared the success of Native American students versus all students, there was a significant distance, I think it was 35 points, between Native American students versus everyone in literacy, 25 points in math, and I forgot the science one.
Yeah, so that's in the state of Minnesota. So when we look at the dedicated funding, it's because there is such a discrepancy across the board. So it's, I'm not exact on the numbers, but 26%, 32%, I believe. We also, in Hastings, are identifying our Native American students for special ed two and a half times greater than other students. And so really looking at that has been one of the things we're looking at as well. One of the things that is a little bit more difficult is when we're looking at some of that data. To disaggregate, we have to have at least 10 students in a cell to be able to look at ethnic comparisons. And so in a lot of areas, we don't get that because we don't have that many students. So then we tend to look at a larger group, just so then, like if we look at all of the middle school, then we can do some comparisons. A little bit more difficult to do that by grade level.
One thing I forgot to mention, so in response to our resolutions, I'm not sure if it states in this document, but the school board does have 60 days to respond to our resolutions in writing, and I have those dates already pre-filled in our document that I can leave with you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Brief comment, profound humility on your part. Yes, Dr. Champa's doing a heck of a job, and we all see it happening. And by golly, we all know that it hasn't been an appropriate amount of energy or thoughtfulness asserted to this effort heretofore. But I just want to applaud you for your advocacy. The door was open, but you walked through it, and we would not be where we are if you didn't do the yo-person's work that you've done. So thank you.
All right, anybody else? No? Okay.
I'm sorry. It's just been, I think we've come a long way from that first meeting, and I would agree with you 100%, and it's been a team. There's been a number of people working to get forward progress movement, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for coming here, and I have no doubts that we will see some great things in the future here. All right, the next thing on our agenda tonight is the Building Construction Fund project update from Ms. Huber.
Thank you. So the Building Construction Fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds, and it needs to be used for school renovations and improvements. So the updates since last month, we did have eight projects that went into the completed status, and they were the water cooler project at both Tilden and the middle school, the high school privacy improvements project, the middle school partial roof replacement, moving the gymnastics to the middle school, the Tilden preschool classroom, the door and glass improvements, Phase One of that, the safety and security improvements, again, Phase One, and then the middle school media center project. So all of those projects have now closed out. The net of all of those projects was an increase to the unallocated of about $67,000. So we're currently sitting at about $283,000 in the unallocated, and overall in the fund, there is roughly $3.2 million. I can take any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Mr. McGinnis here to speak to middle school athletics and activities. Welcome.
So Mr. McGinnis is here to give us a overview of our middle school sports. So later on in the agenda is a vote for the middle school football continuation. And so just, I know you also have a concern about baseball, softball, and so if you'll just kind of give an overview and then speak specifically to those two areas also.
Sure. So, you know, we've compiled the numbers over the last three years. It was a few years back where we changed our fee. We were charging $60 per athlete, and that was changed to 120. So it kind of reflects here in the last couple of years with some of the numbers and the scholarships. If you notice that down below there, we, you know, had 46 scholarships in 2021, 22, and then that, you know, shot up to 65. I personally have not heard a lot of information about, you know, the change in fees, so that's been good. The participation, I'm very pleased with the amount of kids that we get out after school. And, you know, it's just not, you know, the activities here, you know, after school, if you're ever in the building, kids are going down to trial for the play or, you know, they're all over the place. So we have a lot of kids that their day just doesn't end at 2:35. So, and, you know, that's one of our goals is, you know, to give kids, you know, as much experience and opportunity that they can get here after school. So, once again, though, the numbers really have been, you know, kind of staying stable there. I know we're down just a little bit, looking for a big jump here this spring with our track. And then also Katie McElpin has her swim program. We moved that to kind of the spring area here, so we'll get more numbers there. Kids will have an opportunity to try out. Then we've talked about football, you know, kind of where we're at. Those numbers have kind of put us in a position to, you know, have two teams for each grade level with seventh and eighth grade. As you know, the fifth and sixth graders play with the Little Raiders program, so those numbers feed into us. Then, you know, we've kind of looked at and talked about our softball and baseball programs. Today at an athletic director's meeting, and once again, you know, just going through with each school, and they've talked about how kids are at this point, when they're in eighth grade at these middle schools, they're just moving those kids up to the high school to fill in spots. So it's unfortunate, you know, that we've gotten to this point, but it's really, you know, come down to kids are playing traveling, and that starts earlier in the season. And again, we're getting, coaches tell us that a certain kid can't pitch here and there because they're going to play on the weekend. They're going to play three, four games on the weekend, and they don't want to, you know, burn their arm out during the week. So that's, you know, again, that's a situation that we've kind of dealt with over the years. And after meeting with Taylor Pagel, we're excited to propose that opportunity for a wiffle ball league. I shared that with our conference today, and they thought, you know, what a great idea to kind of move in a little bit different direction. Some of those schools have, when they dropped football, went to the flag football, and it's just, it's amazing the amount of kids that have, you know, gotten involved in there. So that's what, you know, we're kind of talking about, trying to, you know, kind of go with the changes. You know, every summer, it used to be tennis, now it's all pickleball. So things, you know, do move around, and I do see a change with the people that I've been meeting with, the coaches, parents. It's what I'm hearing is that, you know, we want to keep something for the kids after school. How can we do it? So that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you.
Do you think the flag football leagues, you know, among the different district schools, there's more kids that actually have went out because now they're not scared of, you know, tackle or, you know, they're not good enough to play on the team?
Sure, you know, the contact is a big part of it. But I am finding most schools are staying within their school district, you know, so they're not traveling, you know, the kids can come in after school and, you know, yeah, so parents can pick them up after work, so.
All right, any other questions?
Pardon me, Mr. McGinnis, just that, are you... Pardon me, Mr. McGinnis, just that, are you meaning that for, for wiffle ball, it would probably be coed, and it would probably be intramural?
Pretty close, yes. Our whole idea of that, that we've tossed around is, you know, the first hour of, of the, the day, we would have instruction, you know, work on skills. And then we would treat it more, you know, like give the kids opportunities for games and contests and, you know, basically get involved and learn the game, love the game, you know, just hopefully find an interest for them. But yes, we, we certainly would. We only have something, eighth graders play baseball and softball, so we would like to, include grades five, you know, five through eight, both boys and girls.
And then just a follow-up comment. I think frankly, all of what you suggested last time and what we're discussing tonight could, and maybe should be considered under the management level of control instead of the governance level of control, meaning this might be really a decision for the middle school, it might be a decision for Hastings Athletic Leadership, Hastings Public School Athletic Leadership, and not really a decision for the board. So when you bring this to the board and ask for action from us, is it because you want the community to be aware of it, and this is a way that we can make that discussion public, because I think that's valid and that's important? Or is it because? Do you feel like you need our, our, our grace, our?
I, I do. Well, first of all, yeah, absolutely, we'd love to let the community know, hey, this is what we offer here. This is, this, Hastings is a school district that you want to send your kids to because there's opportunity here. You know, I, I look at when kids come from the elementary schools over to the middle school, you know, the reading and writing and all the education that they get, it sets us up for success. What we do for the high school, our programs and what we offer, we do that because what, what we offer here. And I do, I, I would, you know, it's not something, it's not my decision, it's, you know, and consulting with different coaches and different athletic directors and people in the community to say, hey, you know, I think this is the best thing that would be for our program. You know? It's, I don't want to shut it down. I, I talked to Trent Hanson a little bit, and he said, you know, there's, I think they had three ninth grade girls' basketball games they had to cancel because those schools could not field those teams. So what's the next thing that you can do in that? You know, how do you, how do you handle that? So, but yes, I am, to recap, I am looking for grace as far as, hey, you know what? We think this is a good idea, this fits our, you know, our district, what we can offer. We have plenty of teachers here in the building that would be willing to get involved to help continue that program, but yet, you know, provide a overall experience for the kids.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for supporting, you know, whatever we can, we can do to get the most kids involved, because I think after-school activities are tremendously important and those opportunities. And, and frankly, I, I never knew there was really such a thing as like a wiffle ball league, but I think that would have been something more that I would have been interested in versus softball, especially after I was a pitcher in college and almost got nailed in the head. So, yeah, I, I think this is, this is good information. And honestly, my biggest fear is, like with the football vote coming later tonight, I feel like I'm putting a nail in the coffin of seventh and eighth grade football for the conference because of, you know, it sounds like there, there's not going to be any schools left, right? So I definitely appreciate the information, appreciate the, the feedback and, and, and all the input.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our school board representatives and committees reports. First up, we hear from Director Zuzik on ISD 917.
Real quick, remember that ISD 917 is a program that is a continuum of the services that we provide. They provide career technical education, they provide alternative education, and the highest number of students that we send to 917 programs are students that receive high needs, low incidence, meaning it doesn't happen very often, but they're super high needs special ed, kids with special ed needs. And it's super hard to staff those programs. And so I'm just going to say three things. One is they successfully wrote a grant, $169,000 for teachers of color and American Indian teachers, which is, they worked with Metro State in, in collaboration with them to help people become licensed teachers and work while they're doing it. Number two, they have developed a program with Fridley Public Schools, and there are other, there are other school districts that are interested in working on hiring teachers from international schools. And specifically, they've had success with people from the Philippines because they have exceptional education programs and education prep programs. And so there are, we are hiring at 917 some teachers from the Philippines, and also hopefully that will be extended to paraprofessionals because... And the third one is teacher apprenticeship programs. 917 is really leading the way on behalf of Dakota County and Bloomington to develop programs where we can have licensure through apprenticeship programs. All three of them go to the number one need at 917, and that is staffing, because they cannot take the kids that we need, that we refer to 917. They, there are times that we have to wait weeks, months for them to, yeah, years, to, because they can't get the staffing. And it's not about, it, it is frankly, the hardest job imaginable that some of the people there do. And, and so I just really am proud of the work that they're doing to be creative and filling those gaps. And these people are not less than. They're, they're, the people from the Philippines are not like, gosh, we're getting second-string teachers. No, these are like the best of the best, they're going to be phenomenal teachers. The people of color, it's so important that kids see in, in the front of the classroom people that look like they do, regardless of the program that they're in. So I, I, I'm just really proud of the work that 917 is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Director Zuzik? All right, moving on to the Community Collaboration Committee update from Director Pine.
Okay. On the, the screen, I did not include that Matt Brunz and Phil, or Director Matt and Director Phil are also part of this Community Collaboration Committee. We met the first time and kind of retooled the purpose statement that was previously under the Community Engagement Group. Our focus is obviously going to be engage the community, we're going to meet quarterly. We have our first scheduled session on March 20th, we're going to do it at the high school, and want to have, you know, some content when the group arrives. So Dr. Champ is going to give part of her gratitude, and then we're going to, for the tech levy, and then also just give some of the survey results, right? We want to make sure the community, you know, although, you know, the feedback when they came back and presented the results, I think statistically about 30-some percent completed those surveys. So it'll be, you know, part of our reach to, if we continue to do that survey work, to have more peo, more parents involved in giving that feedback, and then also give other community members that aren't parents in the district the opportunity to give feedback as well. So kind of make it more, you know, conversational, and then we're going to kind of use that tone to kind of determine what our future topics look like. And then the group will continue to meet before that first meeting, just to kind of nail down those, those pieces. And Matt actually came up with a really good idea about kind of putting like a story map together about the school district, where just doing more activities instead of just talking at people and, you know, more driving results and, you know, capturing a bigger audience, not just, you know, parent age or grandparents with students in the community. So just getting more involvement. And then other ideas were just thrown out of what other means can we communicate, you know, and deliver more messaging, whether it's social media, through the radio, obviously through the Hastings Journal, or through the Raider Updates, you know, we're going to continue to try to have as much outreach as possible.
I don't think I missed anything. No? Okay.
Questions or comments? All right, moving on to the Facilities Committee update from Director Milner.
So our first meeting was Friday, January 26th, and we had a little bit of a timeline to get that meeting in because there was a grant that was wanting to be applied for. So we snuck in that meeting, and the main purpose was that Minnesota Legislature now requires that beginning in 2025, long-term facility maintenance plans must address plans to include one-day restrooms at each building. And the grant just happened to be timed at a wonderful time to be able to apply for that. So Director Subert and Dr. Champ worked diligently that weekend to get the grant applied for on time, and we're waiting to hear back on that. And it appears Kennedy is probably the most imperative one that we're going to tackle first. So we're waiting to hear back on the grant.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All right, moving on to the Finance Committee update from Director Zuzik.
Finance Committee meets for the first time next Wednesday, late afternoon, from 3 o'clock to 4:15. It is open to the public, and anybody's welcome to attend. The, the gist of that meeting is going to be largely related to an overview of the Finance Department and what happens with bills payable and bills receivable, and, and how that flow works and what are the internal controls. So it's really a piece of education for us. And then there's an, a specific piece of information related to special ed funding. As you know, the state has put a considerable amount of money in play to decrease the amount of cost subsidy that it takes out of general fund for schools to fund special ed programming. And MMRK, our school auditor, our, the auditor for the school district, has some ideas on how we can use or attract that funding, and it's important that, that we as a board understand it. And so we're going to be hopefully having a representative from MMRK to talk about that. And then we'll develop our Finance Committee purpose statement, we'll set our meetings for the rest of the year. We intend to have quarterly meetings as well.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All right, moving along to the lengthy one here, Policy Committee, or, or, I'm sorry, Student School Board first, Student School Board Member Committee first with Vice Chair Dressley.
The Student School Board Committee met twice in February. First, we established our mission statement. The committee discussed and outlined the application, interview, and questions, qualifications, and notifications. They also outlined a procedure for how we wanted to interview. Most important thing is applications for Student School Board Member will be open March 1st to March 31st, and 10th and 11th grade students are encouraged to apply. The board will be kept up to date, we'll check in at work, working sessions, and then we'll, the committee will bring the recommendations to the board in May's working session. Any questions?
Now on to the fun of the Policy Committee.
Yeah, right. This is going to roll right through, too. The Policy Committee met on January 26th and reviewed and revised three policies that are recommended for first reading tonight. The committee also discussed and updated the handbook based on the recommendations from the board. Revisions and updates to the policies that are on tonight's agenda for first and second reading were discussed in detail during the board's working session on February 13th and will not be repeated tonight, but they are included in the committee's summary for members of the community who wish to review these changes. The next committee meeting is scheduled for February 20th, wait, 28th, thank you, 28th, 2024, and it's open to the public.
Now we're on to policies.
So policies for first reading tonight are 415 mandated reporting of a malt, a maltreatment of a vulnerable adult, 419 tobacco-free environment, and 421 gifts to employees and school board members. Does anybody have any questions or recommendations for our first reading policies tonight? Okay, we're going to move on to second reading. We only have one policy for second reading tonight, and it's policy 206, public participation in a school board meeting. Any requests or recommendations or questions? Nope. So then we will move on to, we have, I will just, oh, I will just mention that we have 12 policies that are up for approval in the consent agenda tonight, and they are the 300 series policies, which are administration, and some 400 series policies, which are employee and personnel.
All right, thank you. Next, we're moving on to our action items tonight. And first up is the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Dressley.
Can I get a second?
Second, Milner.
All right, any discussion? I just have one question, maybe two. On the calendar, the, this year, this past year, this school year, I should say, the Thanksgiving break, it was the first time in many, many years where we didn't have a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but instead we only had Thursday and Friday off. And the proposed calendar for 2526, as well as the calendar that has already been approved for 2425, has the same pattern. Did we see any significant students absent on that Wednesday where we would want to make, have a consideration for any kind of a change, or we're confident with keeping this structure going forward?
Director Moen is prepared to visit regarding the calendar.
I, I did go back all the way to 20, 2020, 21. The Thanksgiving holiday has had school the day before Thanksgiving break since 2122. Prior to that was the COVID year where we didn't have any school, and they did teacher transition. So this has been, I checked with one of the elementary principals just to follow up. I think because this has been a longstanding thing, it's probably not raised questions, so nobody had heard concerns or issues with it.
Okay, thanks, sorry. Apparently I'm not paying enough attention around Thanksgiving. And then the other question that I had was, there's one staff development day that is on a Wednesday, and that is not our norm. So I was just wondering if someone could speak to the rationale on that one. Correct.
Yeah, that one, so during our calendar committee, the committee looks at all of the constraints and the parameters of that calendar in addition to looking at staff development. And this, the committee wanted to put one day in the middle of the week just to see if attendance, engagement was increased, if it's not attached to a weekend or a break. So it's one.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right.
My only comment is, I've done this, I, for a couple of years in charge of a calendar, and it is the biggest Sudoku puzzle imaginable, and, and there are so many gears and moving parts. Thank you, Director Moen, for your good work and your team.
Yes, thank you. All right, with no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. All right, all opposed? All right, with that, the consent agenda passes. And moving on to the items for individual, individual action. First up is bills payable. Could I please get a first and a second motion to approve the bills payable?
Zuzik motion to approve our, paying our bills?
Dear mayor, seconds.
All right, any discussion? All right, and just would like to note for the public that Director Brunz will likely abstain, as he is a 917 employee, and we pay them a significant amount of money. So with that, is there any discussion other than that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed and abstain. All right, with that, we have six in favor, one abstention for the bills payable. Next item on the agenda is the Hastings Middle School Football Discontinuation. We had received a presentation on this last month, and I don't believe we have anything else to add on top of it, correct? No? Nope, so we are looking for a motion to discontinue the middle school football program.
Director Tate will make that motion, but I want to say that I'm not, I'm not as much sad to see this go as I am just understanding the reality of the times. And this is the recommendation of the, of the athletic leadership and the middle school leadership and, and it would be ill-advised for us not to agree with that leadership. So, thank you.
All right, can I get a second?
Pine, second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously to discontinue the middle school football program. All right, next on our list is the, an addition of a new position, which is the Director of Facilities and Safety. Would you like to speak to this?
Sure, so we have, the recommendation is attached, that was prepared by Director Moen. And over the course of the past year, some of you have been a part of this study for quite a while and just looking at the district office positions. And so the recommendation is to add this position. You will see a change in one of our current positions coming forward after this. So just, and the addition to this also is the Director of Facilities and Safety. And just making sure as we talk about safety as our priority, making sure we have one individual who is responsible for our programs.
Any questions? No? All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the creation of the position for the Director of Safeties, of Facilities and Safety.
So move Dressley.
Second, Milner.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All right, the motion passes unanimously to create the Director of Facilities and Safety position.
Thank you.
Next, we have the, the, another creation of a position is the Native American Parent Advisory Committee Liaison. And Superintendent Champa, would you like to comment on this?
Sure, you heard about this one a little bit earlier as well and during the work session. So our, we have aid, our Native American aid is based on the number of students that we have and one of the allowable expenses is staffing. And so the staffing language is that aid dollars can fund up to 50% of that position. And so in working with that, it's also a line item in our achievement integration, which is also an area where we, all of our work is to work towards integration and, and the work that we're doing there. So between those two, that's how this position would be funded. Much of what you heard earlier also is based on how do we continue to build those relations and have this support for our Native American students? And so this would fulfill that. When you look at liaison, there was a lot of conversation about what that role was and what the level was, and really the affordability piece came into play. And also, right now, the basis is establishing those strong relationships. It was, the position is also written that that could change over time and will be reviewed on an annual basis.
Any questions? All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the creation of the Native American Parent Advisory Committee Liaison position.
I'll make a motion to approve. I think it's part of our MTSS work, it's a part of our community collaboration work, it's been a part of the solution, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Biermeyer seconds.
All right, any discussion? All right, with none, all those in favor of approving this position, say aye. All opposed? All right, with that, the, the position is approved to be created, Native American Parent Advisory Committee Liaison. Next, we have the REDACT PD approval. Superintendent Champa?
All right, so in our work session, we talked a lot about the REDACT and where we are currently with that. And so really proud of the progress that we've made, I would say overall, and we still have Andy Larson here to speak to this as well and really did a deep dive in looking at the three professional development options that are approved by the state of Minnesota, one being letters, one CORE, and the other carryall through the University of Minnesota. And all of the input, as you can see with teacher input, the logistics, sustainability, and costs, all of that combined, our recommendation is to move forward with CORE. And we would begin that training starting self-paced July 1.
All right, thank you. With that, could I get a motion and a second to approve the REDACT PD?
So move, Milner. Second, Pine.
All right, any discussion? I'd just like to say thank you for everyone who's put in, I know, a tremendous amount of time and effort to figuring this out. It's a very big undertaking and a lot of responsibility. So, thank you. With that, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously to approve the REDACT PD proposal.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have an MOU attached to that, that we just approved.
So Tammy, if you can go to the actual MOU, that's the next one. So with that, really having to decide then, how does this work? How might it work best with the hours that are required, our calendar, also knowing that we have a new curriculum that is coming soon? And so looking at what the requirements are for this, we put together a plan. This includes nine modules that are anticipated to be three to six hours per module and three one-hour virtual training sessions. This proposal is an MOU that our staff have the ability to, on their own time, complete modules one through five. Or we have established days before back-to-school workshop, August 13th, 14th, 20th, and 21st. If they don't choose to do that on their own time, we'll have time available then to complete those first five modules. Everything else, we have built into the staff development calendar for next year and we will be paying for those hours, up to 30 for the five modules, at $37 per hour, again, up to the 30 hours. We were also very intentional, one of the questions that we have received is can staff take this for credit, that is an option through CORE. Three graduate credits are available for a fee. If they choose to move forward with that, they will not be accepting compensation for the 30 hours on their own time. So they have the ability to do that without that 30-hour pay for the five modules. They also need to show, demonstrate proficiency at 80%. And so if a staff member is not showing that proficiency at the end, the time needed to go back and continue that will be on their own time. So those are the things that were very specific in the MOU. Any questions about it?
Director Tate, I'd make the motion to approve this MOU and I want to express my gratitude not only to Director Moen and, and Superintendent Champa for the work that they put into this, but I think that this is just a super example of the collaboration between our teacher leadership and our district-level team to make things happen. Because this is really creative. I think it's, it is fair and generous on the part of the, of the district and I think that people will receive it very well. And I, I just think that it's, it's brilliant, the way that it's been put together. And I know that other districts are struggling with these exact same issues. So I'm really happy to see the way that it was done for us.
Thank you to that, and I also want to acknowledge Andy Larson here too. He, he's been moving pieces around and so he had put some staff development training in with those virtual sessions and then this didn't quite work with that. And so he was quick to make some of those changes as well, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe I have a motion and we need a second.
Brunz will second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? All right, the motion to approve the REDACT MOU passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And then finally, our last item, we've done quite a bit of work on the school board handbook, understanding that it is a, still a work in progress. We have a couple of pieces to add yet that we need to develop some norms for. But I would like to thank Vice Chair Dressley for all of the many hours that she put into refining this to make it into a very robust handbook for new board members especially and a good reference manual for the rest of us too. So with that, I am looking for, well, I should say, we discussed in our working session, I believe, last week that we wanted to have one vote on this so that we all are on the same page at least one, one time a year, I think, or, right? And then we review it at the beginning of next year to make sure that everything is still in sync with what we actually do. Because of course, we know things can change. All right, so with that, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the school board handbook.
I will so move.
Biermeyer seconds.
All right, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously to approve the school board handbook. All right, finally, future meetings. For the public, you can see our future meetings are in Board Book, there is now a new link. We have the school board committees link in there that details who are, who is on each committee as well as their future meetings, their purpose statements, all of that information. So you will see that is actually a separate document now from the normal future meetings document in there. Now we just have this strictly the school board meetings, the full school board meetings. So our next meetings, our next board meetings are March 7th and March 27th. And I understand we will be doing quite a bit of work around ESSR dollars, ESSR positions, I should say, the elimination of ESSR dollars and what the future outlook looks like for that. So am I missing anything for March?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay. So those are our future meetings. And any, I guess, any comment on that, any discussion? Okay, then I would like to see a motion and a second to adjourn, please.
Second, Zuzik.
All right, any discussion? No, all right, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.